Welcome to the slideboard meeting for Monday, December 5, 2022. Call to order at 6:35 PM. Our first order of business at 6:35 is a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors regarding the FY23 tax classification hearing. Welcome. Who you got? Okay. Thank you. I understand you will be the spokespeople for the assessors.
Yes. Yes. Mark couldn't make it and Dan unexpectedly couldn't make it either. So, and Eric is our new assessor, so he's still learning all the ins and outs. So, I'm representing the Board of Assessors tonight.
Well, I thought Eric was gonna give it a first name.
Brian will be screaming.
So, I believe in your packets, there is our document about the fiscal 323 tax classification estimate. At their last meeting, the Board voted to recommend a minimum residential shift of 65%, which would bring the tax rate to $8 for residential and open space and $13.14 for commercial, industrial, and personal property. They also recommended, although it's not under their preview, that you authorize the small commercial exemption. There are seven eligible parcels. It results in a total of $101,000 valuation being shifted to the additional commercial base and does not impact the tax rate one way or the other. It still stays the same. Do you have any questions?
I do not. I do not either. Bill?
I don't have any questions, though.
I realize I forgot to tell you something. Under the Mass General Law, we are to tell you that the unspent levy capacity is $1,572.60. That is a requirement.
That was unspent levy?
Unspent. We could have gone up to the levy, but we were about $1,500 below the levy limit.
No questions, no concerns? Recommendation is for the max shift, 65% MRF?
I'm barring any... No questions. I make a motion to shift the minimum residential factor known as the MRF to 65% per recommendation of the assessors. This will result in a tentative tax rate of $8 for residential and open space and $13.14 for commercial, industrial, and personal property, which is an increase for of .10% per 1,000 valuation for residential and open space and .22% per 1,000 valuation for commercial, industrial, and personal property.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, we'll go ahead down to the exemption while we're here. Discussion the FY2023 Small Business Commercial Tax Exemption, which you also referred to as recommended seven parcels eligible. And the exemption and valuation are listed in there. Maybe you already said it, but it's in our document.
Yeah, it's 101,087 valuation shift. There are... It all depends on the percent. It's a 10% shift, but it depends on the valuation of the business. Some of them are mixed and some of them are for low commercial.
So, max exemption is like 13... 28, 28?
Yes, that's for everyone.
Yeah, if all, okay.
Yes. It's a very minimal.
Yeah. We've been adopting it for a few years now.
Almost every year.
Yes.
It's been adopted.
Three or four, maybe?
Yeah, I think so, three or four. It's something that you have to adopt every year. Also included, but is not reflected, is our personal property exemption of anyone with $3,000 or less in valuation doesn't get a personal property bill, but that's already in the mix. That's not pulled out like the small commercial exemption.
I make a motion to authorize a small commercial exemption statute for fiscal year 2023. This will shift the tax burden of $101,087 to the remaining commercial, industrial, and personal property classes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. With that, a move that we close the FY2023 tax classification hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll jump up to the... Jump up to the first on the agenda review of closing allowance policy draft, third read.
I have no questions.
Yeah, the only change was the 500 that we all discussed.
Yep.
Last time. And the change for the payment for new employees.
Right, okay.
I don't have any concerns with it.
Did we answer the comment? There are a few questions on it. Looks like our comments, maybe we addressed those last time, but just to make sure. Section G, does it include part-time, less than 20 hours per... Oh, that is not.
No, these are...
That is from last time, right? Because we... It's included now, right? That has not been addressed. We talked about that last time, remember? There's no part-time.
That's not for this policy, though. That's for the personnel bylaw. If you're talking about...
No, because I thought we talked about this last time. So, G, what page is this in our packet? Page five? G? Item G, regular part-time employee.
Right, but aren't we doing clothing allowing policy?
Isn't that...
No.
Oh.
It's one page. They look like they blur together and I was... That's why I was confused.
No, you're right. Thank you. Wow.
Yeah, it's the one page and all we did was...
Just that, yep.
Just a one update under the payment.
Yep. Got it.
There's no concerns.
I have none.
I'll make a motion that we approve Clothing Allowance Policy File ADM-160 with an effective date of 12/5/2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll skip down to review of the Family and Medical Leave Act Policy Draft, second read.
I have no concern.
Dot 01, second sentence. Assuming that's carryover or is supposed to be adjusted, not to supersede the smoking policy, but something else?
Give me one second to get there. So, I was reading up on something else. Go again with your question.
The supersede's, second sentence in dot 01, under issue date, effective date. I don't... I don't know if we are superseding a prior version of this, but I don't believe this is superseding this one policy.
No.
So, I think that's a little copy and paste.
I think that was a copy and paste. Good catch.
So, we'll clean that up.
Strike that.
And it's supposed to be the FMLA from November 2015.
Right.
It's just the title's wrong. The superseding is correct. So, we'll update that for next read to reflect the proper prior policy name. Anything else in that policy? Have a note or a question?
Not in the FMLA, no.
Bill, you said you were all set, right?
Yeah, I was all set.
Okay. We'll carry for third read next meeting?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Discussion regarding the Shared Health Inspection Services Review of the Draft Position.
So, I had read this after Brian. He sent it to myself and Board of Health Chair after our last meeting that we had, just to give a once-over on it. And my feedback to him then was that, you know, somebody who's not fully familiar with all of the inner workings of what the health agent does, I could read this job description and follow along what the expectations were, requirements were, and all of that, but I couldn't tell, give the feedback of whether or not it was missing anything or, you know, needed more because I don't know what those requests are. He was going to then forward this to Claudia and Charlie for their review to make sure that it's not missing anything glaring. But on first read, both Jeff and I read it and I didn't have any concerns with it.
I share your opinion.
Yeah.
It seems thorough, but I wouldn't know if it was missing something either.
Yeah, especially when I went down and was looking at the essential functions. I just couldn't tell you, you know, the Board of Health would really be the governing body that could look at those essential functions and say whether or not they meet everything they need.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I had the same concerns. I read it, but that's...
Looks good.
Looks okay.
And on paper. You know, and in my thought, this really should be something that the Board of Health is reviewing. I know we do job descriptions and we have the authorization to do those, but it's not something that we have day-to-day oversight on as we do with a lot of the other descriptions that we create and sign off on. I'd really like to see them take a stab at at least reviewing it and giving a recommendation before it comes to us for a final review.
I don't know if it came up in the discussion as well, but I mean, it's not just... It's gonna serve three towns, Boards of Health? So, I don't know if we're getting feedback or gonna ask them to just give feedback on it.
I think, believe there is going to be. It's gonna go to everybody.
To the whole district.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. I think that makes sense and...
And if it wasn't, we can request it.
Yeah, yeah, we can make sure.
I mean, ultimately, it is...
It is ours.
It is ours. We're gonna be owning it as a host agent, but...
Yep, exactly. And no different than a department head advising on the stuff that they identify, so...
Correct.
And it was just confirmed that all three towns are, Boards of Health are reviewing it. Brian's here in spirit, not in... I know you're looking at me funny.
Oh, no. I figured you had a messaging link, so if he had information he needed to share, he would.
Take that here and here.
Yeah.
So, at this point, it sounds like no feedback, but we'll just carry it and wait for feedback from the other groups to see if there's anything they identify that we want to incorporate. Carry that. And there was also the... Other draft materials. Including the intermunicipal agreement.
Yeah, and I did have... I did have some feedback on that. You know, again, I think for the majority of it, it read very clear. It was understandable. There was... I had a couple of questions and I'm just gonna get them out there so people can, that are looking at it later, can see it. It talks about a quorum and it says in a tied vote, the host agent shall have the deciding vote. I know it says on one of the requirements further down that the host agent, as one of our requirements, would be to attend meetings. However, that doesn't mean that that will happen, that you can still have a quorum with the other two there, unless we're dictating that there is no quorum if the host agent isn't there. Because you can't satisfy the tie being the vote of the host agent if the host agent isn't part of the quorum for that particular meeting.
Then it'd be deadlocked, right?
Yeah, right. So, we have to just need to...
Or clean that up, yeah.
Need to clean that up a little bit. And then under... Forgive me, I gotta find it again. It's on page three of that. No, check that. Page four, right at the very top, section six, other municipal services. It just read... It was difficult to read. It was just, it seemed very wordy in there. So, I read it a couple of times and I didn't craft any reformatted language for it, but I think it could use some wordsmithing in that paragraph. And I'll reach out to Brian with any of those concerns, maybe with some thoughts on specific lines in there that seemed problematic. And that was the... That were the only two.
Reads like a lawyer wrote it.
Yeah, it's very wordy. It's very, you know, and I was...
A little convoluted, yep.
It seemed like it was jumping back and forth between two different thoughts and it was hard to follow. Other than that, it was decent for a first read. We can play around with it a little bit.
Yeah. Bill, anything to add?
No, sir.
I know it has, on the bottom, it has, it's just a template and it has like one other town, but we actually have three towns. So, it would have that... The sign-off sheet would have to be changed to have all three of us.
Have all three, yep, okay.
And potentially, I think it was... Warwick? Did we get that email? I don't know if I just got it or if everybody got it. There was another town that might be interested in looking into the agreement that we're creating and joining and making it a four-town.
I don't recall if it's...
I didn't see that.
I do recall there was interest. I don't remember from where.
Yeah, I'd have to go back.
I don't know that I saw it, but...
I'd have to go back and find the email again.
Sounds familiar. Well, we have some time.
Yeah.
Might have the initial in place for January 1 in terms of just, you know, the employee and stuff, but we can always...
Yeah, in this agreement, again, I think we talked about it the last time and it says it right in there. This will go into effect January 1, I believe, and then it will be revamped or, you know, by the newly created Oversight Board to go through and make sure that it meets all of the criteria going forward. So, it truly is a stopgap between now and June 30th to make sure that we have an agreement that can function, but all the nuanced pieces that we're not thinking of can be ironed out in the next six months.
Right. It's really more of an interim period and then the final contract at...
Yep.
That point or agreement.
Okay.
Anything else on that for now?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll carry that. Did... I know we have the minutes, but I did not have a chance to review. Did you guys?
I did.
I read them.
If you would like to proceed, I'm fine.
I have no concern.
Yeah, I had no concerns with them.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept meeting minutes from November 28, 2022, as written.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain. Review of the request for qualifications for the Town Hall feasibility study. This is really, I think, a first read. I don't remember if we looked at this draft before.
We have not.
I don't believe we did. I know he's had it drafted a while, so...
It's been drafted a while. I did go through and read it and I have, you know, a few notes on there, but this is just a first read, so those comments can be...
Just send them over.
Offline with Brian. Yeah, they're minor stuff. They're just general questions. I put comments on here, so we can follow up on those later.
Okay.
There was one note that I would, that Mariah had put in there that I thought begged a good, just a brief conversation if we have a minute or two. And it was about the locations and naming the potential locations of the current location, potentially this backlot here, the backlot in Vets Field or the old Paper Mill or Usher. And looking at, have we had any of the conversations with others that may have had, you know, interest in those lots as well before we start putting those down as potential sites? Because I'd hate to have a developer, an architect, go through and start creating plans and we're spending money on sites that were really, you know...
Have other purpose.
Yeah, have other purposes.
Whatnot.
Just something to think about. I know it's a first read and we're gonna go over it a couple more times, so just food for thought while you're mulling that over. I thought that was a great question. Just something to think about. I know it's a first read and we're going to go over it a couple more times, so just food for thought while you're mulling that over. I thought that was a great question.
I agree. I guess out back here, I have a thought now would be, I think probably not unless there's enough room for that along with senior housing, but I, I know that's really, I think, directionally more where the senior housing committee and a lot of that study work has been focused and it seems to be a better fit. If there's one, if there's one thing we can have, then I feel like that's a better fit to leave, leave that focused on being here than, than considering it for a town hall. I don't know if you.
No, I agree. And the other one was the far south end of what's currently Vets Field and my only concern with that, come on up if you want.
Can you guys just speak up? It's really hard to hear back here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, come on up, Mariah.
So my thought on Vets Field was although there might be enough square footage for a building, I'm not sure there would be enough to make it feasible of putting in the building and the hardscape and parking and everything that would need to go with that without encroaching into usable space that's currently there for our, for the park and the baseball and softball fields and everything else that's there. So that one I'd be concerned about space-wise.
Right, right.
You all were talking about behind here earlier. So currently that is all one lot and we extended the access road last year so that in the future that could be subdivided and it has frontage. So when I put that in, I was not thinking of the larger lot that is kind of behind the library, if you think of it as four sections. I was thinking more on this side. It's, it would, if we did subdivide, it would be a smaller lot that I think would be more appropriate for one building rather than, we don't know what senior housing or any housing over there might look like, but it could be multiple buildings, more like a campus style. It could be one larger building. We don't really know. But yeah, my thought was not town hall or housing, but potentially both. And figuring out if that's possible, you know, maybe it's not, but asking that question.
I think that was maybe my point. I don't know if it is. And so if we weren't sure and we don't, you know, we aren't as far as we'd like to be on senior housing, they wouldn't want to do something that, that encroached or, you know, needed that at all as the primary focus, but I see what you're saying. Yep. Question?
Just to comment, if some other parcels will require a town meeting vote to change their use. Vets Field in particular was given to the town just for park use. So if it's a possibility, it might be worth going to town meeting first to see if the voters are even in support of that. Because if they're not, then why waste the time and the energy? Also, there is the lot, and I don't know if it's listed as the, the one next to the police station on the other side that we purchased, that's not connected to this lot. I think it's lot 51, but I can't remember the first two of the map. And I know that when we did the original senior center feasibility study, they said that we had about five acres of usable land with all the wetlands and other constraints that are there. So I know that's in one of the studies that we did earlier.
Thank you.
Other? No, nothing for this evening. I just wanted to bring that point up because it, it can lead to a shift in focus on what we're asking when we're creating the final proposal. You know, if there are things that we're saying, please look there and it would take a town vote. It doesn't make any sense to have them, having, spending money on doing those, those designs.
Right, right. Agreed. Yeah, my only comment was just the, I think it's actually right on my. I don't know what page it is, but the public notice piece there, you know, study committee, what is our, what is our viewpoint on what that looks like? Are we having a building committee? We've talked about different stuff over the last few years about having maybe a permanent one, having different membership around town offices and what does that look like? So just something to think about. I don't have an answer or what.
Well, I threw in, it's funny you say, I threw a comment on there saying, you know, that we had talked about a standing building committee that would, you know, get an annual reappointment and they're, for all building, construction and major renovation, they would be the one and we would have to look at, you know, if we're willing to go that route, we'd have to be seeking out membership of various knowledge bases to make sure that we have a well-rounded committee and, you know, HVAC and IT and, you know, building infrastructure. So all of those different components, you know, it might be time to look at, especially if we're talking about potentially in the future, the highway department, another building. There's just different projects that we'll have coming up. It might make sense instead of having three, four, five different standalone committees, have one that's well-rounded that can look at all of them.
Thank you. Mariah made some recommendations or had come up with some draft ideas way back.
Yeah, I know what they were, but I did say that.
I'm not going to ask you to cite or recite. I think it might have been around the, the originally dry storage building and then, you know, after that, kind of the DPW building at work. So maybe if you find that and just send it to us as a refresher for, for next meeting for review.
I think one of the things that we, we, I think we had briefly looked at that all together and then said, when we need to figure this out, we will. But how we would handle having multiple projects happening at once and how we engage with the people who will be using those buildings, I think is something we should plan out. So if we have kind of a core building committee, does that membership change depending on what project we're working on or maybe that core membership stays the same, but they are including other people, maybe as non-voting members or kind of what does that look like if we're working on, you know, a DPW building and town hall, those are different. You know, there's some overlap there in who's using the building, but they're also different main users. So that might just be something that if you all have thoughts on, maybe we talk about that in another meeting.
Yeah, I think that's good. I was thinking there might be a main committee and then for each building, there might be an offshoot of a subcommittee that's appointed by them to bring in, if there's one or two other expertise fields that you need on those or, or end users that you want as part of that, including them in those subcommittees to start those ground level conversations and then moving it up through and then ultimately to the, to the town level.
Makes sense. Anything on it for tonight? I'm good?
Good.
Okay, we'll carry that to the next meeting. Thank you, Mariah. It is 7:05. We'll call the joint meeting with the finance committee to order review of the FY '24 budget requests for general government. Welcome, finance committee. I know the board and the finance committee are the first on the list, but we're here till the end, so do you all mind leaving those to the end of the list? Okay. Then we will jump down to accountant. Deb, you, you get to lead us off tonight. You want to come on up?
Really, I don't have much to say.
If you would, please, yes, please, please join us at the table. We should, could we, if you would like to grab the book, would you mind?
Oh, well, I kind of have it on my phone here.
That's fine, but just to have, just to have it on the table if anyone wants it ever, as we're going through. Thank you.
Yeah, I really don't have any significant changes to talk about. My expenses are minimal as far as that goes. The software support is a little bit uncertain because we may be thinking of new software, which would involve a change of costs. The audit has gone up slightly. There may be a single audit in compliance with federal grants next year possibly, so that may come into it. Other than that, there really isn't too much to talk about in this little budget.
I also read through your highlights and challenges and it sounds like we've been doing pretty well.
Yeah, things have been going pretty well, really, all in all. Yeah.
Questions or concerns?
Nope, I think we're good.
No. Easy as that.
That's it.
Easy as that. Thank you, Deb.
Thanks, Deb.
Assessors, come on back up. Section 2.7. Do you want to, I should have said it before, but do you want to kind of just go quickly through some of the highlights, challenges, goals, initiatives? And then we'll look at the significant changes?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I want to let you know, Dan was unable to make the meeting tonight, it was very short notice and Mark was also unable to, but we have Eric, who's our new assessor. And, and so we worked, we talked about the budget and they voted to, to submit it. Our highlights and challenges, we've begun the process of looking to create a job description for an assistant assessor. And we are expecting this person to be able to complete the required professional training within a six-year period and be promoted to principal assessor when I retire in about a year and a half. So we're going to advertise this coming January. And the biggest challenge this year was the early upgrade to our 20-year-old assessing software. It gave me a few more gray hairs than I had before. It took longer than expected, but in spite of the delay, we started the tax rate process and it got approved tonight. So the bills hopefully will go out in a week or two. It's now out of our hands. The DOR has to approve it. The additional highlights included the withdrawal of the fiscal '16 and '17 appellate tax board case by the Northfield Mountain LLC in August of 2022. So we were scheduled to go to ATB and argue the value and they withdrew the case. So I'll take the win.
Very nice.
Question?
Yes?
Are there any open cases?
Oh, yes. I believe that is under my significant budget changes, but we still have pending cases for fiscal year '19, '20, '21, '22, and I fully expect them to file for '23. It is anticipated that we are going to appellate tax board for our hearing for '19, '20, '21, and '22 in May of next year. I don't have a date yet. Fingers are crossed. Our attorney and myself, we are pushing to have the case heard as soon as possible. The goals and initiatives are learning how to use the new software proficiently. And with any software upgrade, there is a learning curve. And we are also transitioning to preliminary billing for the town of Irving next year. So that will be happening relatively soon. The preliminary bills will go out August 1st, no later than August 1st and be due October 1st and then we'll set the tax rate. The other set, the, the actual bills will go out before the end of December or a little bit earlier and be due on April 1st. So there'll be some education of the public and how that's going to work. I expect a few bumps along the way. We, we've never done preliminary billing, so not so much in the office and between the task collector and I, but more with the public understanding how the process works. And like I said earlier, we still have pending cases. We, we also have pending cases with Renovator Supply, which is currently fiscal year '21 and '22, and Eversource, which is '20 and, which is '21 and '22 as well. The Eversource ATB cases are part of a larger, it's all through the state. So the, the Department of Revenue has come down and said, you must value your public utilities using a blended formula of net book value and cost approach. And we hire an appraiser to do this for us. And Eversource, and I will note, it, National, National Grid isn't arguing, but Eversource, NSTAR is arguing this formula, doesn't agree with that. And so they continue, are filing with every town, arguing that they want another case. They want to go before the ATB and then eventually bring it up to superior, to the one step above that, but we'll see what'll happen. It's part of a larger picture. And the significant budget changes are the increase for a full year for the assistant assessor. Also, my cell phone cost is now, I have a town phone. I was using mine and being reimbursed, but as technology has gotten greater, the, the assessor's office should have one so I can go out and do pictures and have it directly upload to the cloud and that sort of thing. So that's an increase in our, in our budget. And our assessment defense continuing appropriation, although we won because they withdrew, we still spent $57,000 getting ready for this case. And I, we, we need to replenish that because I, I still have pending ATB cases. And we also expect, and the only other one was the, to the continuing appropriation for the revaluation. There will be some added expenses as I transition to being retired, then we'll have to have someone come in and do the tax rate setting process and the values until the new person coming along gets a handle on that. But there is a, a learning curve with that. And I think that's about it, unless you have any questions.
Jackie, in cases where we've won a case and this one, you indicated $57,410.58 and was spent in the process of, of fighting and arguing the case. Do we usually get that back in attorney fees or?
No, so when someone challenges their value and the assessors say no the first time and then they go before the appellate tax board, what the, the taxpayer is arguing is they want their tax dollars back. So there's no way for us to get recompensated, there's no way for us to compensate for the money that we're spending to argue this. It's just money that's an expense. The, the brighter side of it is that we, we didn't lose the case, so our value was protected for those two years. If we had lost, and, and I will say, we did lose in the Renovator Supply case of the previous two years, they get 8% interest on top of their back, their taxes owed from the date that they filed the abatement. So it adds up quickly in interest. That's really where the money comes from for the taxpayer, not just to get their money back, but also the interest. With Northfield Mountain, that would have been significant if we had gone and lost, but we didn't. They withdrew. I'm going to take the win. So yes, there's no way for us, there's no way for us to recoup that.
Thank you.
Now, just to be clear though, those two cases are a little bit different where the Eversource one is something that's regulated by the state on the process for how we're doing it and they're arguing the process that every town is doing by regulation as opposed to the Renovator's case, which we do not have to do the same process for and it's an internal.
Yes, so the, the NSTAR case, we, we have been mandated to value public utilities this way, using the 50-50 blend. NSTAR has gone before the appellate tax board and it's escaping me the next step up, but I'm going to say it's not like the Supreme, but it's at the local level. And they've lost both times. They lost in Boston. They lost in Springfield. They recently just lost in Springfield. What happened was they went back to the appellate board and they went back and the higher court declined to hear the case. They basically said, nope. We agree with the ATB. We're not going to hear your argument. So they're still arguing about it, but I imagine probably what will happen is towns will band together and it'll become a group action. And then it'll help us with the legal costs there, but I, I'm thinking that eventually, I'm hoping that we can, that NSTAR will realize that it's not the individual communities that are, we're, we're doing what we're mandated to do.
And so the ATB. And so the ATBs, the two, I think it was two years we said we lost, did we have the adequate funds to compensate for that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, that's where, so you often ask me about the overlay, right? And so we have, we have about $2 million in overlay. And I budgeted another $328,000, put in there. It certainly covered what we lost with Renovator Supply, which was very minor. I want to say it was under, for the two years, it was probably under $30,000, maybe even less than. I don't have it in front of me.
And that's with all the, with the 8% and everything?
Yes, yes. If we were to lose with First Light, we don't have it in the overlay, we just, we couldn't budget for it. But I really feel that our value with First Light, you know, Northfield Mountain LLC is, it's a good value. We go above what we're supposed to, and we'll let the ATB decide that. But it is expensive because I have to hire the lawyer, then I have to hire an appraiser to come up with an appraisal, and then there's also testimony, expert testimony, and that all runs, that was what was happening in the background before we actually got to the ATB, and that's why the bill was so high. And I have to say, that was actually two years' worth of my lawyer's billing. She doesn't bill very often.
Oh, okay. I was going to ask if the 50 that you're requesting is enough, but if you're saying that was two years' worth, it should, it should play out. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Does any of that work supportive of the remaining appeals, or was it only for the two that were?
It was only for the two, but it all, you still have all that work that you've gone into learning about how to defend the case, so it's not like it was lost, that experience wasn't lost. We've had the same legal counsel for, well, since I think 2014 over this, so it's money well spent.
So maybe some savings from the spend.
In theory, there could be some residual savings of less time needed to continue on the future cases.
Appraisals for a specialty facility like that are very expensive, and I do expect the bulk of the money to go towards that.
Okay. Time for all my questions.
Can you come? Questions? I just have one on the preliminary tax bills. And this may be more of a tax collector question, but in a moment here. But so we're making that change, and obviously there is an education piece, and there's probably going to be some confusion upfront, first time doing it, for those that aren't familiar with it. I know there's normally, you know, penalties and, you know, very little, can we do anything in terms of a gray spirit? And if that's, if that's more a question for the tax collector, I'll save it for them.
Well, it's, I mean, I can tell you, from my point of view, and I know Michelle and I have talked, we're going to do a lot of educational beforehand. We're going to send out a little thing with this last, you know, the last round of bills, not this one coming up, but the one that goes out in April and is due in May, and then when the preliminaries go out again. The important thing is, once you get your preliminary bill in the summer, you need to pay that amount on October 1st. And then when you get the other bill, it's not due until April 1st. So we'll spend a lot of time educating the public on the change in the billing dates, and that their second bill won't be the same as their first bill, because their first bill really will just be what the previous year's bill was. You can raise up to 2.5% on a preliminary bill, but it's my recommendation that we not do that because we shift, and that might create all sorts of inaccuracies, you know, overpayments or underpayments, and it would be very messy. So my recommendation is, at least till we get a handle on it, is to just issue the, basically the May, the last billing for fiscal '24, you know, for, well, for '23 into '24, and then give them the actual bill later in the year. I think it will be fine. I think so. Most communities do preliminary billing. We are one of the few that did not. And we're only doing it for cash flow. That's really the issue.
Let's present out more evenly for the taxpayer, too, you know, through the year. The only question I had, I mean, the budget in terms of salaries is just a, nearly a full-year overlap, right?
Yes, it's nearly a full-year overlap. I'm hoping when we go out to advertise, we get lots of applicants, and the committee that will select it has good candidates, and then I can start training that person, and we can make the transition. My date is flexible, but I'm really kind of hoping for July 1st to '24. But it's not, it's not a set-in date if, if it doesn't, you know, the job search doesn't work out well the first time.
Hopefully it's more than enough time.
I'm going to share your optimism that there'll be lots of people that want to apply for that job.
It's a great job. Irving's a great town. I have very mixed feelings about it.
Leaving, not the, not the job.
No, no, not the job. Love the job. Love the job.
Just to be clear for the audience listening at home.
Yeah, love the job. I've been in the job almost 24 years. Love the job. Mixed feelings about, about retiring, so.
Just teasing, but yes, for the audience listening, too. All right. No further questions?
No questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Treasurer, you are up next. Welcome.
Thank you.
Same format. We'll let you run through the highlights, challenges, goals, and then budget.
Sounds good. We had another successful year in the treasurer's office, worked on many projects. One of the biggest ones was personnel policy, which you all have had a lot of exposure to lately. So many thanks to all the people involved, and even the people who started it years ago, got the basis for it all. One of the struggles that we have in the treasurer's office is the ability to do proper reporting, so as we had met with the capital planning committee to go ahead and get a new software system. So that's what was in the works for FY '24. And then, any significant budget changes? We don't really have any large increases. It's just all premiums going up. We, they do anticipate health insurance going up. It had been steady for the past three years, but they, we won't know until our January meeting whether that increases or not, but we just kind of put a little bit of a buffer in there as far as a 2% increase. I think that's it. Any questions?
No software line in your budget, or is that in?
No, that's not, yeah, that one's not in mine.
I didn't know if we broke it up or just carried it only in one.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't one of the ones that Brian gave me.
Assuming, assuming that gets approved and funded, what's the timeline on when would the change, when would ideally the change go in for the software? Would it be at the end of the calendar year or the fiscal year?
Oh, end of, end of the fiscal year, yep. We're hoping to go ahead and produce an RFP within the next month, hopefully going out to bid and hopefully getting some responses by January, hoping to get everyone trained, having some, having, having one selected and trained and up and ready to go for the fiscal year.
For the fiscal?
For the fiscal, yep. So July 1st, 2023 is the plan. Hoping we get some good responses. So we have, actually, we have almost, I think we have five RFPs that we've taken from other communities, so we're going to go ahead and look at the things that we really like from there and kind of compile that together. Going to be meeting with, with Deb and Brian and Jean. So we're going to meet this week to get the ball rolling on that.
Questions? No? I look forward to better reports.
Yeah. I know, it'll benefit everybody.
Sounds really silly, but that's what we're sitting here looking at.
I know it, I know it.
Yeah, the time on task with the new software.
Yeah, it will run much more efficiently. And even with the, you know, having, you know, the department heads being able to enter the bills and just, I think, overall efficiency, not just reporting, but, you know, and the employee portal as well would be a big benefit for people to be able to see their benefit sheets and to see what they have for time, lead balances and everything.
Excellent.
Much more accessible.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Tax collector. Come on up, Michelle.
Do I have the smallest budget? I do, right.
I think you do.
Okay.
I don't know, the moderator.
I was going to say, the moderator, the moderator's only $350. I think he's got to do.
It's nice. I don't have to worry a lot about the budget. I just take the money into my office and I don't really spend it, so.
Make sure we have enough for the rest of it, though.
That's right. So, pretty standard stuff, just regular operations. So the highlights are that even through COVID, we're still functioning properly. And I credit that to not only my staff and, but the whole team, the whole financial team and town hall staff. And then goals are just to shoot towards the future of potential change, and so we're just trying to put together a really good manual guideline, book, procedures for our office.
I was very happy to see that. I always love to see a how-to, you know, transition. It's great to have stuff written down.
You never know what's going to happen, so. So that was the goal for this year and into next year, because there's no real rush on it. It's just something that should be done. The only line item that I don't have a solid number on would be my software support, because the contract is coming to an end, so I'll know more probably January, February, when I have an estimate or something. It's not going to be much, but.
Yeah, I saw you put a little placeholder for potential.
If it just goes over what I have budgeted, I might have to put a little increase in.
Beta?
Beta.
Okay. As we're thinking about what's changing and what isn't, so how much impact software change have to you if you do, you know, the financial software?
I don't think it will have any effect on, on me. It may, if it, it could integrate, but that's something that we wouldn't know yet, so it might, it might impact, but still not on my end.
Well, that's a good impact. It integrates. Questions, comments?
None.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
IT, you want to leave that one for us, Jackie, please?
So some of the highlights for the year included the revised and updated the town website. It's been refreshed, including the build-out of the library sub-site, which is really nice, and Abby, Abby's done a great job with it. I think it looks very nice. And the town website and the sub-site is ADA compliant now. The server in the town hall has been removed, and all the departments are now cloud-based. And we've upgraded our Office 365 software licenses this year to be a more robust model. Also, I didn't put this on there, but today I was going through, we've actually had a lot of personnel changes as far as emails and, you know, that sort of thing, because I was going through, and I was like, wow, there's actually a stack of that. So we, it's been running more efficiently on getting people with their email and how to get online and that. And I have had many, many less panicky calls about, hey, I'm locked out, I don't know what my email is. So I think that people, you know, committees and boards are getting used to the way that we're doing business, and they're, they're using it more and more. And I'd like to think in my mind that they're not using their personal emails, so.
I'm sure it is better than it was.
Yes, it is better than, it is better than it was. Mostly, I have to say, it's because we refuse to respond to their personal emails and it goes to their town email, so when they say, I didn't get that, I'm like, what was on your town email? And they'll be like, oh, yeah, I never checked that. I said, well, you have to now, so. It's working. I think, like, in another year, I'll be optimistic and say we're, you know, it'll just be the way it is. For the goals and initiatives, they're hoping to, we're hoping to create a sub-site for, on the town website for both the police department and the senior center, which is the council of aging. And we are looking to finish the network conversion of the town hall and the POTW. The police department needs to have the IT closet moved to a different location where it currently resides, because it's had some weather-related incidents that have caused damage to the equipment. And we are looking to update the fire department IT needs as well by purchasing a network cabinet to house the network equipment. If I left anything out, Jake will have to take off his select board hat and put on his IT hat. And we have increased our website line item for the anticipated build-up of the police and senior center subsites, and we have increased our software licensing line item to accommodate the increased costs in our licenses and the increase in people using the licenses. So one of the things is, we currently have, I want to say, 18 Adobe licenses, but as more and more people are using it, then they need the full license, and then there'll be an increase in cost. So I did put extra in there for that. And we've increased the copier maintenance line item because we added a copier at the POTW that requires maintenance, and then that's about it. Any questions?
Not on that, but a follow-up on something she had mentioned. For capital, and maybe you know, the IT closet being moved with the damage happening, are we addressing the weather incidents that are causing the damage rather than just moving the equipment?
I have not received anything, to best of my knowledge, to that.
Even if there's nothing in there, I don't want the building to continue to get damaged.
Yeah. It's not, there's not nothing in there, but we are, I want to say, the, the equipment that failed was there since I believe the building was built, so maybe it contributed, maybe it didn't, but there's definitely some water, some, at some point, water damage in that room.
Yeah.
And it is still the utility room for all the telecom stuff that's coming in. So yes, we will. It's, I think it's, short version, it looks like it's additional conduits or pipes that were pulled for cable runs.
And not sealed.
Maybe they're not, maybe the caps are failing, you know, temporary cap is failing. It's been a long time. So they're going to look at that as well, so.
Okay.
But it will, moving this out of there, most of the other cabinets are weather tight except the telephone, so they'll probably be okay. This is just, you know, open equipment, like putting a laptop on a shelf, so that's where, moving it out of that area just in case. And it's also not enough room really for it, so.
There never is enough room.
I couldn't even get a cabinet in there. It's pretty close to shoulder to shoulder, so it's small.
Okay.
So it's mostly an upgrade while we're doing it. We're going to do the work, might as well do it, right?
Got it.
And improve it, so, but we will look at that. It's a great question.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
We'll see you back in 10.
Oh, hang on.
I was going to say.
Hang on.
Just have it right up now.
Yeah. I'll be in front of you. You want to jump down and just do it now?
Sure.
All right. Might as well. Not having to come back. Sorry. Now that you already went back and sat down.
Okay, I'm here as the planning board chair. I started again on July 1st of this year. Our highlights include bringing a long-needed review to our current bylaws. We're very lucky and fortunate Mariah was able to get us a grant, and we are working generally with a consultant to get that done. We hope to have a completed update ready for the May annual town meeting. Our grant runs out at the end of the year, but I don't know if we'll be ready in May. It's very complex and there's a lot of changes, so. And we do have two new members that are learning. We have committed to keep abreast of changes in planning and have started taking some online training with various land use organizations. Our challenge has been finding a fifth member so that we have a full five-member committee and an alternate to attend meetings, so I'm really looking for two people. Our goal this year is to revise the rules and regulations for subdivision and to streamline the special permit process if possible. And we are committed to taking more online classes to educate ourselves in land use. Our significant budget changes are that we've asked for an increase to attend more trainings and an increase in expenses, as the revised bylaws will need to be printed and sent to all households as part of the legal requirement. Any questions?
Questions or concerns on the planning board portion of land use?
Not on the planning board.
Okay. Thank you. Since we're on land use, Mariah, you wanna come join us?
Am I joining as a planner or?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's kind of, I guess it's technically prior, yeah. I was just thinking of it as, but yes, we'll, we'll run through the rest of those and then go back to yours. No, no, stay, please stay. But you can maybe answer some of them if we, if we need. Then we have the conservation commission, which, we have those on a future meeting, though. I know, do we have those on a future?
I'll tell you right now.
Covering them under land use, I don't remember now without looking at the.
Yeah, I'm gonna pull up the calendar.
They're on the list for today, but I don't know. I think it's ZBA Planning Board and CONCOM.
Yeah, I just, I was just checking to see if they were called out separately rather than just under land use. You know what I mean, as a separate call-out?
No, they're not. They're not on for another night, if I can find.
So, we'll, we'll just look at them real quick. CONCOM, highlights and challenges, working on the parking area for the visitors at Poplar Mountain Conservation Area was done this year. Host cleanup events in and around the area. Continuing their trail maintenance to provide a safer experience for visitors and evaluate incoming permits and applications. For FY '24, continue the same improvements for a safe visitor experience. Offer education opportunities to the community, guided hikes, cleanup events around town, resource conservation events and projects, and continue to protect our community's water and natural resources. We'll just put a note, the second bullet there, under goals and initiatives. Not sure if that's just supposed to be the end of the first bullet or if there's something missing. And then, for significant budget changes, they're looking to expand their educational recreational offering for the community and to attract visitors from the outside to encourage tourism opportunities. This could include hands-on learning events, guided hikes, kids' activities, et cetera. The commissioners would also benefit from attending more training to stay current on changing resource protection rules and regulations to aid in permit application and decision-making process. And there is a lot of budget there.
Yeah.
Beyond the, well, not beyond, but related to the paragraph, which is a little short for the amount of change.
Yeah, so, the question I had is trail maintenance, was that? And I didn't go back to the previous fiscal year to check. Was that line moved or is that a new line? Because it didn't address it in the?
I don't believe they ever had a trail.
I didn't think they had anything. It was always done privately.
Yes. Well, and, so, I don't believe that they've ever had more than just a conservation commission expenses line, or at least in recent years. And so, I think that a lot of expanding this budget, although it seems drastic in comparison to what they've previously had, I don't know that they've previously maybe asked for what they should have. And yes, a lot of the work on the trails were done privately. And I've been really excited to see the work that they've done this year to expand, like, public engagement. They've had public hikes and they're looking at bringing in some educators who can do like wildlife interpretation. So, and having the new parking area really opens up the, the use of Poplar Mountain Conservation Area. And all of the members, we've had a lot of turnover as well in the past year. And so, all of them are trying to get up to speed by taking classes and such.
Thank you for filling in and helping answer some questions.
If there's, if there's other questions, I'll have to try to answer them.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate you.
I was just gonna ask. I was under the impression that if Representative was not here, that we would reschedule them for another night. And this is a pretty significant budget increase. I, it leaves me personally to feel to not hear directly from someone from the CONCOM. Mariah, you're great, but with this being their budget, I would like for them to be here to speak to it.
I tend to agree, and maybe we did decide that and I forgot, apologies. I know we have in the past on that, now that you mention it. We can definitely do that.
Yeah.
I agree, it's a lot.
My question, I mean, all seventeen, I mean, it's. The, the other, the other several thousand, they're, they're self-explanatory. The 10,900 for the maintenance, I just had some questions about how they arrived at the number and the process, how they got there. And I don't expect you to answer on behalf of the CONCOM, so. I wouldn't mind hearing from them in a future one.
I just, I don't know if the committees are aware, but the, the chair of CONCOM is, is having serious health issues. And is unavailable for that reason.
Okay.
We, I believe we reached out to another member to see if they could. So, we'll, we'll follow up with other members and see if someone can come in further, expand on that for us. And I just want to understand some of the same, you know, how did they get to the numbers that they, that are there? Not that, some of it doesn't make sense, but, but why, where do you get that from? Any other questions other than just understanding it that we wanna plan to have them answer? Okay. ZBA, really no change to their, smaller than our tax collector's budget. She caught me off guard on that one. Moderator, I caught it. I was just like, I got one. I assume no questions on ZBA?
No.
I believe that wraps. Land use, we'll come back to CONCOM in a future meeting.
Yep.
With that, we will go up to Office of Community Planning, which is not on our list, but is on our list now.
Recently added.
We'll fit that in ahead of land use in our list now.
So, obviously, I'm a brand-new department, so I don't have a budget to compare this to. So, I have made this up.
That is the best response that I absolutely could have ever said.
I probably would have said, so I can have anything I want, because there's no. There's no baseline.
Brian and I talked about what we've spent previously from the select board budget that, you know, obviously was not just me, but trying to kind of base it off of some of those expenses and trying to come up with any new line items that maybe we didn't necessarily think of before. So, again, there might be some overlap, but one of, I think, the most important line items, which aside from my salary, is the largest one, is consulting and surveying services. And Brian and I added that, not as like to be for a specific project, but just when we need to start a project with information that we don't even have yet, using that to come up with a basis to even write a grant proposal or create an RFP. So, more of those kind of auxiliary consulting services. So, that's the largest ask on here, and the rest is kind of just supporting my work with professional development print services for engaging with the community, advertising, things like that.
It's not a large line item on there, but I was very happy to see the public engagement services, the, the whole shift for community development and really sort of looking at the community at large and the entire public and how we engage and what we do. I was happy to see that line item with that, knowing that the shift of focus that you have, so I appreciate that.
Yeah. Like, we have a lot of big projects coming up that will require a lot of community engagement and some of it might be beyond what we're able to do. Or if not beyond what we're able to do, it might make more sense to have a neutral party leading some of these conversations. And that was kind of the intention with that, was to have the ability where if we need to bring someone in to facilitate conversations that we either can't do ourselves or we would prefer to have someone else lead them, that we have the resources to do that.
Questions? Obviously, new budget, but anything stand out?
No.
No.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
The town clerk is also not here tonight. Do we want to reschedule him?
Scrolling.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
I moved to go to a different one, so now I've gotta go back.
Sorry, I just kinda started going backwards.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah, there's no hyperlinks on the table of contents.
Really? I'll have to talk to the designer about that.
I believe he was level, level.
He's actually a decrease.
That's even better.
Yeah. So, the town clerk has always been a very straightforward budget, where it's, the driver is the number of elections. There's less elections this year, the budget goes down. And he calculates it out. He knows how many hours the polls are open, how many poll workers are gonna be there, knows what the rates are. It's a very finite, so, I mean. I know in principle, we said if they're not gonna be here, we, we would like them here and want a representative, but I would say that is only if there's questions that need to be answered. I don't have any questions for the clerks, but maybe the, the rest of you do.
No, it looks very straightforward.
Yeah. I've always appreciated, I've always appreciated the, the process that he goes through. And when the budget's not there, he doesn't request for an inflated budget.
True. I think your, your last sentence before, I don't think you meant to put those two things together, but I would say, most of the people tonight didn't need to attend if it's based on whether or not the budget's significantly changed. So, and, and I know that wasn't, it's not normally our reasoning for attendance or not.
No, no, no.
You were referring to bringing, in the future rather than, than in general.
Correct.
Just to, just to clarify. Is everyone good with that?
I am.
As is?
I'm fine.
Yep.
Community access television.
It's above it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they're, they're in a different.
Different order, yeah. I'm referring to two separate things. I probably should refer to the same thing. Community access television, so, the board issued a procurement in FY '23 and contracted for a three-year term with Berniston Northfield Community TV, Inc., BNTV of Northfield, Massachusetts. Thank you, as always, here tonight, to provide professional services for recording of our public meetings and broadcast content. The current work builds on the initial year that we did of recording and streaming on the internet. And the work to acquire equipment and infrastructure to actually broadcast this on our cable channel is close, very, much closer to completion. Not quite there, but we're getting there. And so, we're expecting to get that broadcasting to happen this year. And currently, select board and school committee meetings and all town meetings, special and annual, are recorded and broadcast. Goal for FY '24 is to continue work with BNTV to formalize public broadcasts of our meetings and explore potential to expand offerings. And the town will work with, to note, work to notify residents of local channel option for the public content, once that community access channel is up. And there is no significant budget change for FY '24. Questions on the access?
No.
I think one, just, just expanding on that, like, expansion of offerings, something that came to mind to me recently was, we have the select board, we have the school committee, obviously others, you know, we may be able to do in the future, but maybe public hearings, any kind of public hearing or special permit, you know, those level of things maybe that other groups have when they come up, because they're a little less than ordinary, might be something to consider and talk with those groups about doing, that are not broadcast today.
No, we're good.
I think for some of the planning board stuff, that might also be a way for people to see what the planning board does and maybe someone will be like, oh, that sounds interesting. I'd like to join.
Selfishly, there was one that was recent, I would like, I couldn't attend, but I would like to have heard. So, it was, that's what made me think of it, you know, because it was not just usual business, not to, not to minimize, but it's a little more of a special thing.
I actually think it's a great idea, especially for a special permit, because you're, a special permit is allowing use that's not normally allowed under your zoning. So, it would be great if we could have more people at least tune in. It'd be great if they came in person, but if they were gonna tune in. Also, I was thinking that once, it'd be great for the zoning bylaws when we're at, when talking just about zoning bylaws, we're having a discussion, not the, the pre-step, but when we're on the draft and we're trying to like, to get that discussion or a public hearing for our zoning, which we always have and nobody comes to. So, so that would be, I think, would be great, great use of the community television, so.
Excellent. Yeah, and I mean, we can talk about that in the House of things, other committees and, you know, planning board appreciate the representation and discussion, but, you know, other groups wanna talk about doing that for some specific thing, even now, we can discuss that with BNC and they're open to seeing what we can do within the scope.
Keep in mind, we just have to commit some other three members then.
And I, and I tend to agree. You don't have a voice if you're watching it. It'd be better to be in person, but.
It's better to be in person. Well, my idea is to educate everyone before you bring the, the vote before the townspeople.
Yep. I'm seeing it, may bring people to the next one, so. Anyway, just a little sidebar there, but appreciate it. Then. I have to go back to table of contents. Sorry. Hope that worked a minute ago. Guess we'll go to the top and start with the moderator. All right, so we're all good with the moderator? It's 2-2, 2-2.
Yep.
Level-funded, 350, which might be the smallest budget.
I think so.
Select board, so FY '23 highlights and challenges. Could be a much longer list, I'm sure, but we'll leave it at this for now. Several projects were delayed or extended because of supply chain and labor challenges that required, beginning of FY '23, to be spent closing these projects out from '22. Worked with the wastewater department to close out the Arch Street forced sewer main replacement project, the paper mill, road, pump station, and forced sewer main. And the library to finalize their lead certification and to close out the library construction project. Select board worked with the town clerk and other town officials to complete the review of the draft town code project for suggested bylaw and regulation revisions, which is still well, well in progress and underway. Once the revisions are in the town code format, the project's gonna be presented to the voters and brought to the town meeting for consideration and hopefully be adopted. We continue to work with state and regional partners to work toward funding the replacement of Church Street Bridge and for comprehensive safety improvements to Route 2 and Farley and Irving Center. And these projects are, you know, ongoing long-term engagements with the benefit from active citizen participation. We are working with the highway department on the reconstruction and planning improvements for Bridge Street and Maple Ave, and with the treasurer and accountant to explore the new financial software solution. We work with, the administration worked with the select board and the treasurer. We work with, the administration worked with the select board and the treasurer's office, council, and employees to revise the personnel policies and procedures, which we are reviewing now. This project began prior to COVID and was stalled, obviously because of all of that impact. A sustained effort has been put into review, to the review and the feedback process, and as of December, we are nearing completion. Or at least it's, it's at our table now. The office also worked with departments on hiring, the review and adoption of revised position descriptions, and we are starting work on conducting the new compensation and benefits study. The initiatives and challenges are in addition to the general day-to-day administration of the town, addressing concerns and responding to the needs of the public. For FY24, our office continues to assess townwide priorities and available funding resources. The office is preparing to support other town departments on a variety of projects that include software conversions and implementation, bridge and road reconstruction, playground improvements, and other planning initiatives. We will continue to work on maintaining progress on the personnel policies. And there's a bylaw in there as well that we are considering for personnel. Significant budget changes, so the budget request reflects the removal of the planning assistant position from the office with the understanding that cost of the community planning office has shifted to that budget, which we just reviewed. Increases include the step increases for staff, increase for office software support, and an increase in council fees and in employment advertising. Those are the significant drivers there. Obviously, if my fellow board members have anything they want to adjust with what we have in our budget, please, please speak up, and if there's any questions from the finance committee.
I have no questions.
None here.
I think we're good, no questions?
No.
We're good.
Okay. Finance committee, we didn't request a narrative unless you'd like to have one. We carried level funded?
We did.
Okay. Any questions or concerns?
None.
None.
Okay. I think... Is there one more that I missed here?
Buildings grounds and maintenance is in this section, but I think we normally cover them when Glenn is here, under the highway department.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we even have them listed as building and grounds maintenance on the 19th.
Yep. Yeah, because we've been combining it. There's miscellaneous down there. For insurances. For all of our insurance, variety of insurances. Our Franklin Regional Council of Governments assessment and the Around Town Newsletter.
Uh, looks like it's scheduled for the 23rd of January.
That's because our very astute administrator knows all of those rates don't get set this early, so it's in there and it's tentative, but it will probably change as we get those later in January, so. I just jumped ahead because it was in the book for this section. To, I'm not sure what personnel was supposed to be.
I don't know, I was trying to figure that one out.
That's why I went through it again.
I was scrolling away, trying to find, I'm saying, I don't know.
On the agenda, the, um, the first one on the last line says personnel, all by itself.
Personnel, town clerk, Glenn.
I will consult on that and we will add it somewhere in the future if it's missing. Or if it's a placeholder for the personnel relations board conversations we're having on the personnel policy in the future. And we need to do something there, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it put together and brought back. It's the HR portion of the select board budget. Is what it's meant to refer to because it's the personnel expenses, the HR type expenses. They are a subpart of our budget, I don't think they, probably don't need to be called out as a separate topic next time, just to be, not to confuse it. Because HR falls under our administration budget.
So that's everything under the human resources expenses, training seminars?
Yep.
That, in your budget?
Correct. Yep, yep, so yeah, in the select board and administration, the first two sections are specifically select board and admin. The third section is the personnel or HR portion of our administration. Do we want to call that out separately in the future or just cover it under select board?
I would.
Can work in phase.
I mean, just leave it under select board.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll take that off as a separate call out next time. We'll add community planning. Okay. Leave that is...
For operating, I think that's everything.
That's it for general government for, for this week. Uh, our next budget meeting is the 19th.
Correct. Public safety, public works.
You got it. Police, animal control, fire, emergency management inspections, tree warding, highway, building grounds maintenance, solid waste and waste water and water. Alright, 7 o'clock.
And if possible, concom.
Yes, thank you, and if possible, concom. Anything else the finance committee has for tonight?
We do not have anything else for you.
Okay. And with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the joint meeting with the finance committee and resume the select board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear any, I need at least one more.
I didn't hear them.
At least one more, so we got a majority, yes.
I didn't hear them over my fellow members. Perfect. Alright, thank you, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Excellent.
Okay. I'm going to continue in the new business section, we'll go to review an appointment for Golden Kane Committee, John Rice and Kelly Loind. So it's currently a three-member committee, pardon me, with two vacancies, and we have letters of interest from both Kelly Loind and John Rice.
I saw that, I am going to make a motion to appoint Kelly Loind as a member of the Golden Kane Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now follow that up with a motion to appoint John Rice as a member of the Golden Kane Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank them both for volunteering?
We go from not a quorum to full.
Yes.
I like it. Review of professional engineering services agreement for Wheelock Street culvert project, Weston and Sampson. Welcome back, Mariah, maybe I should have saved you till the end.
Yeah.
Actually, the end. Of the budget part.
So this is a proposal for professional services to complete the project that we started with MVP funding. Several years ago, we designed two culverts on Wheelock Street for intermittent streams and now we have funding to construct them, and so this would be doing the bidding and management for that.
Maybe it's just because we've done lots of big projects, I keep reading it over and over again, looking for all the rest.
Yeah, it was very short, it was very short and sweet, I did the same thing, I mean...
I've scrolled through it like five times, not, not tonight, but just in general going, where's the rest of it?
Yeah.
Any questions?
None.
None.
Looks good?
Yep.
Okay. Would one of you like to make a motion?
I make a motion to adopt a proposal for engineering services for the Wheelock street culvert replacement, bidding assistant at 4,000 and construction administration, 10,000 for a total of 14,000.
With Weston and Sampson, right?
Right, with Weston and Sampson, effective December 5th, 2022.
Second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And review of the professional services proposal for the FY22 financial audit, Scanlon and Associates. So we've gone to our annual auditing.
Yeah, as opposed to, we used to do what, three years?
Yeah, every three. And we have budget for this, obviously. Any questions or concerns?
No. Well, one question, the cost, is that the same? I don't recall from last year. Fairly standard, 16,000, correct?
It's 16,000, yeah, I know it's kind of buried in there, but it's, uh, yeah, it's engagement administration, other fees on page 118, but yeah, it's 16,000. You're going to ask me that, and it's in the, I'm pretty sure it's in the budget, we just looked at it.
Yeah, I think it is.
I believe it is the same, or it's kind of a thousand, but I'm going to have to actually look to answer that for sure. Slight increase. Actually, the budget probably encompasses more than one, so...
Yeah, I think it does.
Yeah, so, it was 15 last year, so it is up 1,000, yep.
Just want to see the timing of this.
Are there any other questions?
No.
Is this late?
Is this late?
The...
In terms of timing?
Yes.
No. I don't believe so, I think we try to do them, I think they're usually done about six months post, because we've got to get everything for your fiscal year end done, and then I think they want to have free cash certified, so those transactions have been certified by the state already and all of that before they go back and, and visit that, so. I feel like it's pretty accurate and then to get it done, you know, before the new fiscal year is over.
Just no other questions, I'll make a motion that we engage Scanlon and Associates for the annual audit in the amount of $16,000. And that's for the year ended June 30th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, do we want to jump to the bylaw or the manual draft first? Probably give them both a healthy little bit, and then we have that next I have tonight, as well.
I'd say go with the bylaw first.
Okay.
It's...
Review of the proposed personnel bylaw draft.
Yeah.
Third read of more.
I'm going to forward to the two of you an email from council, and it just had some redlined...
On the bylaw portion?
Yeah, just on the bylaw portion.
And that's more that just come out? That's not, that's beyond what's in our packet, right?
Correct. It just shows his redlined version of responses to some changes that we had requested at the last read.
Okay.
So give me one second and I'll send that to you.
Okay.
You should get that any second.
I heard it on his and saw it on my screen.
There you go. Yeah, in the version that we had in our packet, you know, Brian had put some notes in there about changes and and Corey was able to go back through and you'll see some comments on the right-hand side about responses to those. There wasn't a lot, it's all within the definitions, section three was a large portion of it, was the definitions striking out the positions covered by a collective bargaining agreement in the beginning, that ought to be renumbered.
Is that 1B2 that we're talking about?
Yes, that was...
That was that piece that we were talking about, back and forth, being a little confused.
It'll have to be renumbered down to three, 1, 2, and 3, but yeah. He didn't have any comments on that, the only ones he gave feedback on were the definition for part-time, less than 20 hours. He didn't have a problem with it if it's something that we're regularly utilizing. And seasonal employment, I think Brian had added in things about designated by the state. And unless we fall under a certain category for Commonwealth departments of what they're authorizing, he didn't feel it was necessary to put in that language. But other than that, there wasn't a whole lot of feedback from the attorney. Section four did clean up the language about this board serving as the personnel board, should there not be a personnel board constituted.
Yep. It looks like... I'm jumping back a little, I think, but that definition's the regular part-time that I started the meeting with earlier there.
Yes, yes.
Looks like the comments say we should define it, since we do have them.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll add that in.
That was on the part-time?
The, yeah, the regular regular part-time employee.
Less than.
Oh, it's, it's there in blue, I'm sorry.
It's there in blue, yeah. Part-time, under twenty hours, non-benefited.
Yep, part-time, less than twenty per week. It's eight.
I had a question. What I didn't see under that section is any reference to committee employees who are stipend. And my, my question would have been to Brian, should we, should we include? And the only reason I bring that up is because I remember years ago, when we were talking with the personnel committee that existed then, that was a question that, that came up and that they actually addressed as, as a personnel committee. They indicated and stated whether certain employees were to receive a stipend.
Oh, they, they, they set them?
Yep. They were, the slugboard asked them that question, and they, and they addressed it. I suspect it's not anywhere you can find it today, but, but it's not anywhere in the packet.
So is your question whether or not, so this is the proposed language that we're moving forward with. So my question to you would be, is your proposal that you want the future personnel, or the, the board, the future board, to handle the amount of stipends that are being paid?
You're saying the future personnel board?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Is that what you want? Or you're just mentioning?
That's what I'm asking.
I'm mentioning it.
Just because it was at one time?
Right, right, right.
So informational, but we could go either way?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and also, would you want that, so if that's, if that's something that you're trying to capture in language that the personnel board is going to be, I'm not sure that falls under their purview of setting a financial piece. I would have to, you know, have that thrown back through council to see what their thoughts are on that. It just seems a bit outside of the purview of a policy and personnel board to set financial amounts. I don't think that falls under their purview, but that's just my thoughts on it. But also, I'm not sure if that's something that you would want in front of, in the personnel bylaw as well. Because the bylaw only gets changed by town vote, and I'm not sure that rises to the level. There was criteria of what rises to the level of personnel bylaw and what didn't. And there was a conversation with the attorney, so I'm not sure that would rise to the level of a personnel bylaw. It could be captured in the manual if, if we thought it was something, or a standalone policy based on constituting what the personnel board does, but there's more questions than I have instead of answers.
Right, right. Yeah, my, my only concern is that looking at at chapter fifty-three, the procurement, and the personal bylaws, that it, it appears to address any and all issues of, of of pay slash revenue given to individuals of the town, but doesn't, doesn't address stipends in any way whatsoever. So that was my only question, should it? And should it be here? Or should we ignore it?
When you refer to the, you know, historically personnel, personnel board was doing that, were they making a recommenda, was it, was it a request for a recommendation, or were they actually setting?
It was a request for a recommendation.
Okay, so they weren't setting, they were recommending.
Right, right.
Okay, I think maybe to, just to what you were saying, is that nuanced? I feel like, I feel like I've heard this before, heard it, or maybe we talked about it in the past, and it was a recommendation? Maybe we tried to get the the Personnel Relations Review Board to do it at one time. And, and then maybe that's when it came up, that the Personnel Board had in the past been a group that would do that?
No, I'm fine with the, I just bring it up. So there's some context to, to it, and if everyone is fine with chapter fifty-three, personal bylaw, personnel bylaw, as the definitions occur in it, I don't have a problem with it. If no one has any concerns.
I don't have any concerns on quick review with the red line from the attorney and the changes from our last discussion.
Nor do I.
Any other things to review or you want to bring up about the bylaw at the moment?
No, not for the bylaw.
No, I don't have anything else.
All right, I don't have anything else on the bylaw either. We'll carry it. Want another clean read at it, you know, especially after the edits from the attorney, and nothing raised a flag, but just to have an opportunity to, to read through that.
Yep.
So then we will go to the review of the proposed personnel policies and procedures, manual draft, third read.
So Brian has included memo about
I was just looking at that.
Previous discussion items, that we're not trying to rehash things that we've already worked on.
Yep. And some of those are things we've made a decision on, and some of those are open items that were, that he's working on, some draft language, or some possible ways to address.
Like I said before, I've, I've read this so many times, I might read something again that, and don't see any concern with it, that others will read and, and have concerns with, being fresh eyes looking at it, so I am very open to having people critique what's on there and pose questions. You read it so many times, I lose the ability to sort of make those changes in my mind.
There is the page six, I mean, this is kind of where we left off last time, was page six.
Yeah.
With the first kind of two overtime and meal breaks and, and those things.
Yep.
Just the highlighted section about payroll and timekeeping, that is a change from our current payroll schedule.
Yes.
Recommended for July one. I don't, I don't have a concern, I agree with it, but I just want to note that it is a shift, just to make sure it's correct.
Right. And so that allows, right now, the payroll ends Sunday night at midnight. Eleven fifty-nine on Sunday night. So that when the department heads are filling out their payroll, they're assuming the payroll will be correct, if they want to fill them out on a Friday before they leave. And then hope that their assumption, nothing changed, or there wasn't any unforeseen circumstances. And then they're rushing in Monday morning to complete that payroll, to then get it to the treasurer's office. So this sort of alleviates that by moving it by a day, so you're not, you're not worried about that weekend. When you leave on Friday, your payroll's done, and the weekend from the previous weekend is incorporated into that, and so it allows a little more accuracy come Monday morning. You're not having to do a whole bunch of fixing.
A little less scramble.
A little less scramble. And it will only, there, there was a question posed on whether or not this will show, how it will show up on the end user's payroll, and it will be a one-time sort of blip based on the shifting of that one pay week. Where it may not show up in one pay period, and it'll show up in the next one, so you'll be, you'll see a, depending on when it goes into effect, it'll, you'll show a change only the one time. Nobody will lose anything. They'll either lose it in one week and gain it in the next, or gain it in this week and be short the, the next. But either way, it's gonna wash out over a two-pay period, a two-cycle.
Yeah, basically, it's just gonna.
It'll wash.
For anyone that works weekends, that's the only impact.
That's the only people that'll let it impact in on that one payroll.
And that one payroll, it'll, so the only impact when we make the change will be anyone who works through the weekend.
Oh.
Because the Friday is still included, so be no difference for anyone who just works the normal Monday through Fridays. And anyone who works that weekend that would normally see it in the following paycheck, they will now see it three, you know, three weeks out in the paycheck after.
Right.
Or two weeks out, I guess, in the, in the next, next cycle.
Correct.
That's the only.
That's the only.
One time.
Yep.
Yep. And, and now the only Monday updates are Friday afternoon, Friday evening, maybe.
If something happened on, you know, after, say, before three or four P M.
Yeah. On a Friday. A smaller amount of change potential.
Hopefully. I don't know if you just want to go through them, go through them all and.
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense. It kind of were last time, right?
Yep.
Kind of going down one by one. This doesn't note payday, does it?
Say that again?
It doesn't note the day payday of the week.
I don't think it does.
Yeah, I didn't either. Okay. I know in some discussions, we do a short, we do a short week, because it's Thursday, I believe. For the moment, anything else in payroll or timekeeping, Bill?
Nope. The only thing it does say related to that is the amount of pay in each paycheck, and the employees are paid promptly on the scheduled payday. And I think it left it vague.
So that if there was. Shift or change.
A change, for whatever reason in the future, we can do that easily without having to re-edit the manual.
It may say it in the holiday section, and it's rare, but if it's not in here, we should make sure we put something in around what happens on a holiday pay, when, when the payday's a holiday.
Okay.
Because we should, it should be defined. It might be in the holidays, I go back to it, but just so people can know whether to expect it in the following or the prior, you know, when, when those things happen.
Go ahead and pose your question out loud.
I just keep reading, I've read this department head sentence, and it's only one sentence like ten times, and it just, I don't know, I'm struggling with it. Anyway, I think it's just me.
Struggling with the purpose of, of having it?
No, just the whole, the way it's said. No, I get it, I mean, but I I, I don't think it's possible, so it seems a little odd to, so, so the, the premise that departments can try to meet, to attend a board commission, probably should say committee, in town meetings within their regular weekly hours, I mean, if you're saying they're gonna shift their schedule, okay, but otherwise, almost all of those meetings are outside of normal hours.
Yeah, and that's what it's, and that's what it's saying is it's that they will conform their, their work schedule to wrap around a meeting that they have to go to if it's a night meeting. Whenever, you know, possible. So if they have the ability, and we know we need somebody here in the evening, come in late that day, leave early for lunch, take an extra two-hour lunch break, and come in tonight for the meeting tonight, flex the hours so that you can be at the meeting, and you're not having to feel like you're putting in extra hours.
Okay, and it's meant, okay.
When possible, and it's really up to the discretion of the department head. If they're unable to make that work based on the needs of the department, they fulfill the needs of the department first, and go to the meeting second.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. It's more of a, making sure they're balancing their time.
Yes.
For their own sake, not, yeah, okay, I follow it now.
It's not for our, it's not for our sake, it's for their sake.
It's not for the, it's not for the hours of overtime, it's for the, the life balance of the employee.
And not burning somebody out, so they're putting in, you know.
I follow.
If they have three or four night meetings that week, and they've got to be there, then plan accordingly, and don't, try not to put in seventy hours that week and burn yourself out, and.
Right, right. We don't expect you to do both.
Correct.
At full.
At, at full capacity.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's, that's, I guess, maybe the premise I was missing in reading it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jackie, did you have a question or comment?
I just wanted to address your concern about the holiday pay. Like, if, if the pay period falls on a holiday, most of the employees are on direct deposit, and they just schedule it so that it shows up on the regular scheduled day. At least that's what they've done in the past, is they've just issued the checks, printed them, and then they would still go out on the holiday, so it doesn't affect it.
You can't have direct deposit, it's not a banking day. It can be pending, but it won't come through until the prior or post-day, because it's not a banking holiday, so.
We, we've had it happen occasionally, but we got paid on the regular schedule, but it might have just been either a little early, or it was a little late, but it wasn't, like, it might have been midnight on, you know, when the holiday turns into the day.
Right, it's on, it's on the next banking business day. It's pending usually, right, but it's just a, I just, just for clarity.
Yeah, no, it's a good question for, and I can follow up with, with the treasurer to see if they clarify that, you know, to have a standard policy of capturing the expectation of, are they gonna get paid the day before or the day after?
Right. It has happened, but it doesn't happen very often.
No, it's these holidays right now that are coming up that usually affect it.
Correct.
Yep, okay, just, just for, and, yeah.
But I believe we got paid early if it, if it wasn't feasible to do it on the payday.
Right. Okay, thank you. Hazardous weather closing section? I need. I don't really, I know, unless you chime in if you do, but I know, like you said, you've seen tons of this, so.
I've seen it.
Bill, more for, more for you and I?
Yeah.
Do you have any?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
This does, the, there is a change with it, though, it, it does encapsulate the ability to work remotely, that we have found over the last couple of years.
Right, with COVID and.
Previous to.
We've learned how to.
Previous to COVID, that would never have been language in there, but.
Was that in the same section?
Yep, it's the.
Yeah, it's.
Second paragraph, right?
Second paragraph, yeah.
Okay.
It refers to it. It's not the detailed policy on working remotely. It just cites that that is expected in hazardous weather, in lieu of, of I tend, this isn't the right word, but, but being present physically in the, at the buildings. Article two, employee benefits. Those red bars make me think there's a comment every time I see them.
Yeah. There isn't. So the whole Article two under employee benefits, the idea, this got revamped a few times, but to keep it very succinct and short paragraphs about what the blurbs are, they can always reach out to HR to get a further, you know, explanation if they want, but bulleted at the top and then breaking out some expanded information below that, but still keeping it very simple. I mean, you could talk a lot about health and dental insurance, you can get very expansive on it, but this is a manual that we want to keep in a reasonable length and pare it back from the one hundred and forty-four pages that it was before.
And those are subjects to change, they're really supplemental, so it should be kept as such, right? I don't know if your copy said this, but having, that you have done this. I didn't write this, and I'm not sure what that word is. I don't know if that rings a bell to you, it's slightly different than...
Which one?
Over health.
Oh, flexible.
Flexible.
Flexible savings account, FSA.
I couldn't make that out.
Yeah.
Oh, that's just meant to be the...
It's to replace, because it's not just a health savings account, it's called flexible savings account.
Yeah, yeah, okay, got it, got it. I thought it said durable, and I was like, that's not right.
Yeah, no, that change was already made in the electronic copy.
It's in here, yep, yep. I thought it was an addition to FSA, and I was trying to figure out what it was. It was what it's changed to.
Got it.
Got it, okay. Anything in that, in the employee benefits bill?
Nope.
Compensation plan? No concerns about the administration section? Or position descriptions? Or reclassification?
I'm down at rate of pay for promotions.
Yep. Did you have a comment on it, or you're just there?
No, no.
Okay, okay, I'm good.
I just wanted to note one thing in the pay plan. It's a couple paragraphs up. We had originally, I think, talked about every seven years. It was meant for the reclassification, you know, the study.
Like, the comp.
The comp study.
Comp study, yep.
This is at five, so I'm going to call that out, that the two of you are aware of that. If you were an integral part of the other one that had it at seven, there was a discussion about leaving it, changing it, and ultimately it was moved to five. It can be easy to just scroll past and not catch it, so I want to make sure you were aware of that change.
Especially because it breaks on the page.
Yes.
Okay. I remember it being very up in the air, too. I mean, we're doing it in three, so... Any changes? I didn't see them, but there's no change in longevity, right? It's the same.
There is a call-out. There's, there's one question about...
Number six?
Number six, benefits eligible part-time employees. I think Jackie, you were part of that conversation. You showed language from just a couple of years ago where there was a decision to not prorate that. And so the request has been to stick with that decision and keep longevity as a full payment and not prorated benefit for part-time. So looking at years of service, but not prorating the actual payment.
Jen did mention that you're talking about less than a thousand dollars compensation overall with most of the benefited part-time employees. It's very, it's a minimal impact on the budget for longevity. We do have a number of benefited part-time employees now. Used to be I was the only one. We have four now, I think, or five.
And soon to have another one in this building here.
I was thinking that, too.
I was going to say, the only other counter, you know, concern that I heard was sort of the implication of valuing time versus, you know, somebody who's working twenty hours versus somebody who's working forty and, you know, the appearance that they, they're getting more bang for their buck. They're not working as many hours, not here as often, and they're getting the same. That was the only pushback that I heard. And I didn't hear that directly, that was just part of the general conversation about some of the voices of concern about keeping it as a full payment. Just for full transparency.
In the general conversation, so... Well, we talked about it, we've talked about it a couple of times in the meetings I've been in. Your benefited part-time employees are kind of a niche employee, not... A lot of people can't afford just to work twenty or twenty-five hours a week, right? They need either the full forty or not. And so that was, the comment was brought up about that, and the comment made was, you know, they could work forty if they wanted to, but that's not how we design those positions. We've designed those positions so they're only, you know, twenty or twenty-five or twenty-eight hours a week. And the, and I, I'm one of the employees. It's that we've been getting our longevity since, full longevity since fiscal year, I want to say eighteen or nineteen, and I had found a budget from the assessors where we had an increase in the longevity pay and brought forth to the finance committee and the board selectmen at the time, as saying that the treasurer, whether or not the treasurer had the authority at the time, had said that the benefited part-time employee was entitled to the full longevity. So that led to a discussion, well, how much financial burden are you talking about for the town? And the current treasurer had said it's really very minimal, because most of the benefited part-time employees at this point are at the lower end of the longevity, because it's a fairly new position. I am at the top, but the overall impact was less. And that brought on a discussion about valuing, not making the distinction in the longevity. If a benefited part-time employee is staying, they're, they may be bypassing other opportunities to work full-time to stay with the job that they're at. So that was... For the minimal impact on the financial matter, it just seemed, could we strike it? I don't think I left anything else.
I don't think so. That was the conversation at the department head meeting. Obviously, council recommends...
Prorating.
Prorating, and that keeps it standard with everything else that we do for part-time, except holidays.
Which we just changed to not really reflect prorating.
Well, you would only get the hours that you typically work,
but they're not prorated to your hours working. Yes, they're still prorated some, but not necessarily. Because if you work three-hour days, it's not prorated, right? You'd still get the same eight as someone else.
It will create some additional work on the treasurer's office, because they will have to calculate, which is what they used to do, calculate the rate that you're going to get your longevity, especially if your job grows and your hours change through the years. If you start out at twenty, and then you go to twenty-two, or you go to twenty-five, and you end up at twenty-eight, or that sort of thing.
Bill, what are your thoughts?
No, I'm fine with that. I was just trying to understand that compens, compens, compens...
Compensatory time?
Yes, time.
We'll be down there in just a minute.
Yeah, it's meant on longevity on prorating or not prorating. It's drafted as prorated, and I don't know if you're in favor of that or changing it.
No, I'm in favor of that, yeah.
I don't want to assume, are you in favor or opposed? It's written in prorated, and I know you were part of the process, but I don't want to assume that means you...
Yeah, so honestly, I've gone back and forth on it. I'm, and I want to say indifferent, but I'm leaning towards not prorating it, and there's some benefits to acknowledging, just what Jackie was talking about, the idea that small towns utilize a lot of, or try to save on cost by utilizing part-time when they don't need to hire somebody full-time. And for a small acknowledgement of their number of years that they stayed in a part-time role, I don't think I don't think it's too much to offer the longevity in the full, full amount. Yes, they haven't put in as many hours as their counterparts that are working full-time, but I'm not sure that argument holds enough weight for me to say that it's worth prorating it. Which puts you right smack in the middle.
That's where I'm sitting.
Sit on that one. You can sit on that one for a little bit. No need to come to a conclusion tonight on it, just something to... You know, either way, I'm not going to lose sleep over it if it goes one way or the other. It's not a deal breaker that I'm like, this manual, you know, has to have this or else. It's not one of those items. It's a, you're talking about for any one of the handful of employees, it's a couple hundred bucks is what the difference is. So financially, it doesn't have a huge impact on the town. It probably doesn't have a huge impact on the employee. It's more of, where do we focus the balance of what's the purpose of the longevity and how do we apply that? Is the number of hours worked part of the factor of how much they get, or is it the number of years? Onto the next. We'll come back to it, I'm sure.
I tend to feel like it's meant for years, so not to prorate it, but... Yeah, we'll have to, we'll come back to it anyway, but, yeah. We're not going to finalize it tonight, anyway.
No, we're not going to finalize it. Before you go too far, callback pay?
That's, yeah, that's where I was going to go next, yep.
The only note on there is that there was talk about callback pay for part-time employees, and I think, you're here, Jackie, I'm going to use you as an example. One of the examples of, we have a part-time person who answers to an elected committee, and that committee, that chair might call on that part-timer outside of their normal hours and say, I need you to get this done, I need you to come in and take care of this, whether it's emails, phone calls, filing, whatever the case may be. There's something that's happening. Now, there's, there was a discussion about sort of changing the culture of what truly is an emergent callback situation and what has just become the regular norm of expectation of, if I call you and tell you to do something, you're going to come in and do it because you're our employee. And sort of balancing those two of saying, we need to change the culture of, if somebody works Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and that's all they work, unless there's such an emergent need that they have to be here on Thursday or Friday, because if they don't, some catastrophic event is going to happen, then send an email and they'll take care of it on Monday. There's no need for a callback on that. So some of that is shifting culture of how we engage our part-time employees, but there are situations where it may happen, where it's warranted, and that's what, that's what we're talking about as far as part-time and callback. Do they qualify for the extra hours, or is it just additional hours for, you know, is there guaranteed minimums? Or is it just you come back and you do the two hours or three hours, and that's all you get because we asked you to come in? So that's how it was posed.
I, I don't know if either of you in your careers have worked under callback or not.
I have not.
I have. Is, is the basis for the four hours at straight time based on an eight-hour regular full-time day? Or do you have any idea where that four-hour basis comes from?
So that is, so the basis, the minimum of four hours, so the only context I have is it's through a CBA, through the collective bargaining. And there was a minimum of, if we call you in, it's, you're going to get, it was negotiated where it was a minimum of four hours of pay.
So it was part of what was in the contract, per se, so not...
Per se. That's the only experience I have with it, if you're called in for, you know, additional work. But then again, that was also under the context of anybody that was being called back in for that was full-time.
Right.
Which kicks off the time and a half. You know, this one, this was a caveat of it'll be straight time unless it gets up to more than a certain hours, and then it turns into time and a half. I'm not actually a big fan of the callback practice, the way we do it now. And I think there needs to be a little bit more work on that.
My, my understanding of callback is the same as Scott's. It was negotiated through union practice. And probably only because it was being abused to call people back into work with no compensation.
Very minimal.
Right, very minimal.
Very interruptive.
Even very minimal for, in theory, yeah, okay.
So that was the basis of the discussion about...
I really should have you come up, so the audience can, if you're going to add something, please. Thank you.
So that was the basis of the comments about the part-time benefited employee being called back. Say a situation arose, and the supervisor or the elected board called them back for an hour's worth of work, then they would only be paid their hour's worth of work, although they had to travel in on their day off and then travel home. So that was really where the conversation originated from. It wasn't, it was more of, it's my day off, you call me back in for whatever the reason, and I'm only going to be compensated for an hour. It just didn't seem fair when other departments that are under the callback would get called in for their hour or fifteen minutes or half an hour, whatever it was, and they were guaranteed four hours of straight time. So it was more looking at the policy overall when you do have those provisions where a benefited part-time employee does get called back on their off-hours. So that was really where it was from. It's more of a, well, what about those, those employees?
Off-hours, you mean?
Yes, off-hours.
They, they had just left work.
No, no, like, you don't work on a Wednesday, you need to come in, whatever.
Well, that's not, that's not callback.
Well... It is technically callback.
So if you're, if you're reading, if you're reading, so this is not, so callback is not, it's specifically not the situations that you're talking about that are an extension of the day that they're in. That's not callback, that's just, you're staying late. That's different, that's overtime. So this specifically says in there, callback pay is not intended to apply... They've left the building, they're gone, they're home. Whether it's later that evening or the next day on their day off or on the weekend or whatever, they're called in to do something when they weren't originally scheduled to be there. But I think the two things, when you're talking about any callback, when we're talking about full-time, part-time, it doesn't matter, when we're calling somebody in, it really is sort of honing in on the use of callback and when we're utilizing that and why we're utilizing it. And I think it's, there's been instances that I've been made aware of where the callback could have easily waited until the next scheduling or the next working day, whatever business day that was. It was not emergent. There are some where it is and you need to be in here, there's a federal deadline and it's close and we just got notified and you know, like, here's a rare example, but for the most part, I think unless there's an exigent circumstances, it's sort of a retraining of those department heads and/or commission and boards that oversee them to say, stop calling people in on their days off, their days off are their days off.
So it's not my understanding, that's ever been a practice in Irving.
I've had it happen to me twice.
Really?
Yes. I got called back in on my off-day, in the assessor's office. I worked for an hour, an hour and a half, then I went home, but it doesn't, and I don't know, looking back, I can't remember if it was truly an emergency, but I received a call from my supervisor telling me that I needed to come in. I think one of the times it might have been the previous town administrator, but I had to go in and work, but it wasn't callback because I didn't work four hours. I mean, I suppose in theory I could have extended my time off and worked four hours, but I mean, it was my day off and it was only compensated at straight time. And you know, personally for me, this doesn't really have any bearing, it's more of the overall practice. If it does occur, what happens to those employees that get called in on their off-times? That's all. Their days off.
I think if you're talking about how prevalent is it, very rare.
Right.
You know, very rare. So it's really, you're sort of, if you are gonna put the language in that says, we have callback language for full-time, that's there. We can critique that if we want to. The call-out from council is if you're going to extend this to part-time, you need to create a whole nother category and call that out about what the specifics are. But either way, I think, sort of a retraining and a, or not retraining, that's a, it's a bad term, sort of highlighting the importance of utilization of callback appropriately and you know, when it's appropriate, when it's not. But I don't, I don't get the idea that it's a prevalent concern that it's happening a lot, but I think if we start growing more part-time benefited personnel over the next few years, it may be something that we grow into trying to utilize more. So you're building it now for something that may happen in the future, potentially.
You wanna swap? Mariah, come on up. Thank you.
I just had a brief question that, I don't remember seeing it in there, and I actually was just working with Brian on our remote work policy, and I know that that's referenced in here, but I don't know if it's been talked about, about how you would deal with, like, callback in terms of a remote worker? So if Brian gives me a call and says, "I really need you to read this email right now," and it's, you know, Saturday morning, you know, if I'm doing that remotely, does that then count for this? And I think if I was reading that, I would assume that it does, but I don't know that that's something that's been talked about.
In this, thank you, but in this modern age, the idea that callback doesn't mean you actually left your house-
Right.
To be called back to do work, right, outside of your working hours.
And I would assume that that means something that's truly interrupting, you know, it's not a quick thing, but if it's my Saturday morning and I'm out with my family, you know, and I get a phone call from my supervisor, does that count? And I think that that should be explicitly stated, either here or in a remote work policy or wherever, what constitutes callback in terms of remote working.
Yeah, and I want to say that sounds like compensatory time, but now we have a definition and nothing like what I would consider, because that's just a term, to say that time should be compensated normally for me.
Correct, yeah, compensatory time is something completely different.
But, but in the, in the, in the policy, it's, yeah, something different.
So I just put a note on there to come back to that for callback about, and it's, the question I posed to myself was how do we compensate someone for callback pay when the callback requirement is for remote work? And just so we can follow up on that. Because like we said, it's a good point, it doesn't always mean you're coming back to the office.
If you're asked to work, it doesn't make any difference where you are.
Right.
Well, that's the question, right?
Well, it doesn't. If you're asked to work and you're, and you're technically not at work, then-
Well, I see your point. I also have worked where if you didn't have to come in, you were paid actual time because your interruption was that much less, there was no travel, there was none of these things that you did on your own time but didn't get compensated for outside of the norm. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying, and that was well pre the remote work environment that we live in today, so, but just that idea that is the callback purpose to compensate for the fact that it's more significant interruption for a very short amount of pay, where if it's at home and you're five, you know, five feet from your laptop, is that, I don't know, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just-
I once worked for an agency that had forced overtime, so you, if you picked up your phone, you were already coming to work, you had no choice. You had no option whatsoever.
So nobody answered their phones?
Whether it was your day off or not, right, so people didn't answer their phones.
Everybody screened all their calls?
Everybody screened their calls, absolutely. I mean, it was horrible.
Yeah, I laugh about it, but it's not funny.
I've screened a lot of those calls in the past, though.
I'm sure.
You gotta answer that phone!
I was just going back to overtime to see if that was, if overtime for remote work was, was in there and I didn't see it in there as well.
The remote work policy's in draft, so we should see that soon, so we can figure out how that incorporates or interacts.
Whether it's in the standalone remote work policy or embedded in here.
Right, right.
Or at least referenced in here, but it's a good question.
Yep.
Agreed.
My only comment is just in the second paragraph on callback there, it talks about, you know, extends, extend, extended shift before, after.
Yeah, that's just overtime.
It's not meant to, right, but up above, it does define that two hours after is also considered just an extension of shift within two hours rather than a callback. It's a little odd to me, but we just may want to-
If it's more than two hours after?
It's a callback, but if it's less than two hours after you left, it's not a callback. That ends up falling in the second paragraph. I would assume, we may just want to clarify in the second paragraph again, that extra hours that merge into their regular shift beginning or end or less than two hours after, right, just to be consistent. That's a little weird to me, but I also know, you know, I didn't drive, I didn't get in my car, turn it on, drive out the driveway, turn around, get called and come back and now it's a callback, right? I'm sorry, I know there needs to be something-
Right, and I think that's what sort of Bill was talking about, you know, if you go back to the, you know, the 80s, you would see people like, "Let me punch out, I'll hit my car, turn the car on, call me back in, I want my overtime."
Here's my four hours.
"Here's my four hours and then I'll go home," you know, and punch in, punch out, walk out the door.
Right. And I think we don't have a lot of that.
We don't have that concern.
We don't have the issue, but I don't think we have a lot of the two-hour callback either.
No.
Fire is probably the one exception because it can't be, it's very unexpected, police maybe.
I was gonna say, any of the public safety are pretty much the only ones that that would apply to that could happen that quickly where-
Public works less so, but yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, if we decide to go with part-time, then we need to, council's request is that we create a whole subsection paragraph that deals specifically with that.
I'm just gonna ask the question, well, I think you mentioned it already, that the four-hour callback was overtime, wasn't straight time probably in your experience.
Well, because it, it would have to be because it's for full-time people, so it would've put them-
But this is not, even for full-time.
Correct, and that's why I'm-
I just didn't know if that's something we wanna-
And that's why I'm not sure where that language-
It seems odd to me.
It seems very strange where that language came in.
Today.
Correct.
That it's four-hour straight time, even if you're at 40 hours, if you work less than what time and a half would exceed for the value of-
Correct, and up to, so it's up to whatever the actual value at time and a half. So if you went in and it took you an hour, at time and a half rate, you're still not gonna hit what would have been four hours of pay. It always defaults to whatever is the higher value, not a lower value. So if it's something that takes them, say, two and a half hours, well, two and a half hours at time and a half, actually puts them higher than four hours, or very close.
Very close.
It's like 2.7 or something, whatever it is. Right in that ballpark. So if it took them longer than two hours and 45 minutes to do the work that they were called in to do, they will be putting in for overtime pay.
At the actual time.
At the, for the actual time worked. If it was a quick fix and they, it's more of a, "Thank you for coming in and taking care of this quick fix issue that we needed done," it's a four-hour minimum at straight time. It's convoluted.
Yeah, if nothing else, it's convoluted to me. So anyway, just something to think about too and when we come back to callback, because we're going to, I'm sure.
We will.
And just ponder that one too, because that's just, yeah, I understand concise might be more costly, but it's just a little, little odd to me.
Are we on comp time now?
Yeah.
So there was conversation about part-timers getting comp time for additional work done at one point and to me, that's-
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Do it, comp time, so an employee that works extra hours above what their part-time benefited hours were could take that as comp time instead of pay and I said, "That doesn't make sense." Yeah, it's pay only. That was just a quick conversation, I don't know how far that went, but I wanted to throw that out there. But it's for full-time people and it's at one and a half times the rate. The only conversation that, that I've had on this is, and I had a quick conversation with the treasurer this evening about it, was there was a request to waive the 30-day period on how long they can hold it and if there's a concern on the financial impact, then along with waiving the 30-day, must use within 30 days, is capping the number of hours that they can bank as comp time. And part of that is department needs, some department, you know, you say you have to use it in 30 days, the department need isn't there, they get paid out on it and it forgoes the purpose of earning the comp time to be able to take time off in the future. You don't really get to realize that if you're in a staffing situation where you can't utilize it within 30 days. So the request was to be able to leave it for an entire fiscal year and as of June 30th, if it's unused, it's paid out at the last pay period, whatever the last pay period is, but capping it on the number of hours. And when I spoke with the treasurer about it, she actually was not concerned with that because there's not, it's not a ton of use of it, especially if we're capping it and it has to, there's no law that says it has to terminate at the end of the fiscal year, but the request from the treasurer was to continue the practice of terminating it at the end of the fiscal year to keep it clean and concise that if you've earned it in this fiscal year, you're paid it in this fiscal year no matter what and it doesn't transfer The request, the conversation I had was from the chief and it was about sometimes their needs might mean that somebody who had an idea that they wanted to use the comp time, the idea they were gonna go use it on this time is no longer valid based on staffing needs. They would still like to save that to be able to use it when the staffing needs come up. They're not concerned about getting the overtime pay. To them, the value is in having time off. I find that a lot with people with families and there's functions and I don't always, especially for new employees, and that's a big subset of people. When you're getting new employees, they don't have a lot of vacation time accruals, they don't have a lot of personal day accruals and, you know, holidays, there's not a lot of that on the books. So to be able to work an extra overtime shift here or there, build up some comp time to be able to take that time off for that family function and those type of things makes sense. I wasn't concerned, and I'll take any one department, you know, and I think police is one of our larger ones with six, if they were to, you know, accumulate 24 hours each, you're talking 120, 144 hours of total time at the end of the year, if everybody earned their 24 hours of comp time and had anticipated using it and never did, it's 144 hours that would be paid out at the end of the year. The likelihood of an entire department earning the maximum of whatever we set as a allowable amount and then not using any of it is highly unlikely. So that was the request and I made sure to speak with the treasurer. She was not concerned financially of the impact of leaving it longer than 30 days. So figured I'd throw that out there. That request came this morning in a conversation.
So I'm gonna pose the question, why do we even have it?
I agree. I don't like comp time at all.
I love it.
I think it's complex and I think it's-
I think from the employee's standpoint, it is a valuable resource.
And I can see that if that is, especially new employees, I'm looking at that or someone who would like to have more time off than they are granted, but that creates a management complexity.
Well, all, so all of it is, is based on the department head's approval.
Right.
Nobody gets to just take a day off.
But you can get into, no, no, I don't mean the time off, but the accumulating of it and then at some point, and I understand they can keep denying it and then eventually it gets paid out theoretically, but just, I can create a lot of complexity, you know, time off and time schedule management and all that, because you're well beyond what-
As somebody who accumulated comp time, it was, and worked directly with the HR and knew how it all worked, it was not a complex, it's no different than saying you've got 40 hours of vacation time on the books, you've got 12 hours of comp time on the books, it's just another line item. Whether, you know, we know how many personal hours they have, we know how many sick hours they have, we know how many vacation hours they have, we know how many holiday hours they're getting paid, all of those are just line items of payment. Comp time is just another term for time off in the future. You've earned it, just like I've earned vacation and I have a line item for that, I have a line item for comp time.
Right, but it's something, I mean, I know it's approved by the department head or appointing authority, but it's, it's not consistent. It's earned by the employee by choice and by approval, it's not granted like other benefits. They're granted or accrued on a fixed schedule. This is very, highly variable.
Well, highly variable until we put parameters on it.
Right, but even with these parameters, it can be highly variable, department, department, employee to employee.
Sure.
Because they have a lot of, not, not in a bad way, but they have a lot of control and impact on how that works within, as approved.
So I look at this differently of, they earn it at time and a half, but we're not physically paying them more. So from a financial standpoint, it is actually beneficial to the town to have comp time.
Only if we don't have to backfill the straight time off with an overtime employee.
And you can, you can set, you can set those parameters where comp time cannot be used if it, if it incurs overtime costs for the department.
Right, right, right.
You can set whatever parameters you want. That's the, that's the beauty of having the authority to write this manual.
That's the complex, maybe, and that's maybe exactly my point, that's the complexity of it, right? So all the nuance that we may or may not want to take into account for something that-
But to-
For me, it's foreign, so obviously I come from a different angle on that.
So for, for me, comp time is, you know, if I'm, if I work an extra shift and I earn, you know, an eight-hour shift and now I have 12 hours of comp time on the books and I utilize those 12 hours and it doesn't create more overtime, it just means that the staffing was there and I was able to take those 12 hours off a month later, two months later, the only thing the town loses is the productivity out of those 12 hours. They don't lose any more money. That annual salary is still the annual salary, I just have more time off. The only thing the town loses is the productivity out of those twelve hours. They don't lose any more money. That annual salary is still the annual salary. I just have more time off. So I'm not gonna try and sway anybody this evening, but I'm, I like it. I think it's a good benefit. It's not a, I don't see a huge impact financially to the town to be able to allow people to earn comp time and utilize it for future time off. I enjoyed more time off than overtime money throughout a twenty-year career. I value the time away way more than I value the overtime of my paycheck. Some people are like that. So maybe that's why I feel a little more strongly about it, but.
There was a point in my career where those overtime hours were very important to me. There's, there was a point where they wouldn't be. I understand what you're saying. Versus time off, right? There's a balance there.
So anyways, currently it's in there that it must be used within thirty days. The request is lifting that, but also implementing a cap on how much people can earn. So if somebody, let's say we do, if that, if we went with that, the department head would get their slip that says, no, you can't put in for more comp time. You already reached your maximum of, you know, ten hours, twenty hours, forty hours, whatever we put as a maximum, it's just gonna go down as overtime and it's just gonna get paid out. You did the work, you get paid, you're only allowed to keep so much. Not many people want time off in the middle of winter. It would be much easier to take that extra day off or leave three hours earlier on a hot summer day if you can.
You're making me wish that my rollover time that ends on December thirty-first and is capped was July thirty, June thirty. It would be much nicer. It'd much easier to use that time off.
It would be much nicer and utilizing, utilizing comp time in a floating fiscal year allows you to do that. So. Per se.
So it already allows past thirty days though, the discretion of the department head who.
Correct.
Who has to manage their time off.
Correct.
So.
So this is just saying that it doesn't, they don't have to go every thirty days and ask their department head to sit down and evaluate whether or not they want to allow them to extend it. It's taking the burden off the department head to review that request every thirty days for another extension, another extension, another extension. And just by right, say that I can keep it until June thirtieth. And if I don't use it, you gotta pay me out. You would have paid me for the overtime anyways. The overtime budget's still the overtime budget.
I do think we need to make sure that we are budgeting in full for all comp time though.
Well, we are. That's.
Historically, that was an issue.
For overtime. It's an overtime line item.
Correct.
You're not budgeting for comp time. You budget for overtime.
I understand. Right. No, I understand within the budget.
If you're not budgeting for enough overtime in your department, then we have to, you know, now's the time to look at that for the, each line item.
I think there was some times and probably further back where it was being carried beyond fiscal years and not budgeted.
So that's different.
Assumed to be used without backfill. And that is financially, we should not assume that. And I don't think any of us want to carry it past fiscal year. So it's a non-issue.
Correct. That becomes a non-issue.
A non-issue, but.
You're budgeting for a certain amount of overtime for any given fiscal year.
Right. And so you should be aware of whether you approve comp time if you were at that point and you may need to backfill it, right?
Oh, we got through nine more pages.
I know. I'm just, I wonder if there was a part of that too. I know we're still on comp, but. Did you? Did I hear you say it has to be approved to take it just as regular time off? Does it say it in there or that's just the practice? Is this what you said, right?
It's the practice.
Considered time off.
It's no, it's considered time off.
Has to be requested the same way as, okay, got it. I guess I don't think of it as a burden to extend it because I would look at it as. I understand the, I'm assuming employee asks to have it. So it's just a bank. I can have whenever I need it during the whole year. But I can understand on the other side, if it's meant to be used in a short period of time, then that it requires exceptional circumstances. I think the example you had was police, for example, are in a staffing situation where they cannot allow that time. Can I carry it further?
Right.
So be it. But to me, that's treated as exception rather than a burden on the department head to.
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, any more on callback?
No.
There are comp time, I'm sorry. I'm going back to callback.
Yeah, don't go back to callback.
Sorry.
We got a question in the back here.
Department head can't deny comp time is in lieu of overtime.
So the employee has the, the option.
Earned in lieu, you mean?
Yes. So the employee has the option and when they're filling out their slip of whether or not they want to get paid the time and a half for the additional hours for that week, or they want in their time bank, time and a half hours to be taken off, utilized later. It's still earned at time and a half because you have to by law. You can't work, you can't earn it at straight time if it was above forty hours. So they're earning it at time and a half and they, instead of getting paid that pay period, they are able to use that time off in the future.
Use it as basically personal time.
Personal time. You just think of it, it's another way to earn personal time. And the way we utilize personal time is they can take it in a one-hour increment, two-hour increment, four-hour increment, full day, whatever they want. They have twenty-four hours of personal time. They utilize it at their convenience and at the discretion of, and approval of their department head. This is no different. It's just another bank of time.
From, from a management point of view, to me, it just gets really hard. I, for an agency or a department, let's use the police department as an example. When you have a small department to begin with and then you have sick time and vacation time and personal days, and then you throw in comp time and, and, and the reality of the the way a police department works where the emergencies occur and you, you, you know, you can't, you can't say, well, you know, we'll take care of it tomorrow. Somebody has to go. And more often than not, you're not gonna get to use that comp time.
So you, it's interesting that you used the police as the example. The chief of police is the one that was advocating that we enhance the comp time usage because it's a benefit for his department, not, not a concern of his. He actually wants to see the lift of the comp time thirty day usage because it allows for more flexibility for him and his department to utilize the time that they've earned. So I know while you sit there and say that, so from your standpoint, you think, oh, that should, that'll be a burden. But from the actual department heads that I've spoken to, it's actually easier for them to have more time to be able to grant time off and, and, you know, be flexible. The more flexibility we give our department heads and our employees, the easier departments run.
Let me ask you this. Who's he gonna replace? How is he gonna replace that body when?
How would he replace him on their vacation time? How would he replace him on their personal time? How would he, you know, it's the same thing. I don't understand on a holiday, he replaces them with other staff, whether that's overtime staff or it's, they have enough staff. And so comp time doesn't have to be used in a full day. Comp time can be utilized in three hours. The guy doesn't want to stay until, or you know, or the officer doesn't want to stay until three in the morning. And there was two of them on until three in the morning. The officer says, I'm beat, chief. Can I go home at one today? It's a, it's a Wednesday night. I don't need to be here until three in the morning. I'm using fictitious numbers, but, and they utilize two hours of time. Or I've got something going on, chief. Can I use two hours of my comp time to come in at four PM instead of two PM? Do you have coverage for me to do that? Yes, I do. Okay, great. You know, for any of the other departments that aren't, you know, at mandatory minimum staffings, it's, it's at the discretion of the department head. You want the time off, take your time off. They're not gonna backfill anybody. The highway doesn't backfill. They don't call anybody else in. Senior center's not gonna backfill.
I don't think the senior center should use the comp time right now.
No. But that idea that, you know, there's, there's one department that has a mandatory minimum staffing that we need somebody here. That's, and that happens to be the one department head that was advocating for the change that I talked about. All the rest of them, it does, it costs no additional funding. Highway's not gonna incur overtime by giving somebody a day off. There isn't anybody else to call in. Right? I mean, wastewater's not gonna incur, wastewater's not gonna incur overtime by giving somebody a day off. You know, they all work.
Not on the current shifts.
If there's a change in staffing.
Highway, yes, because they don't work the same shifts all the time, year round.
Now, yes, when they're on their flex now. It could be on the days where they only had two. When they go to summer hours and winter hours, yeah.
They're split, but I get what you're getting. So I think we, I think I have a note from it from the other day, but we were talking about overtime and what contributes towards overtime. And if we're allowing people to generate comp time, that then will end up being time off, which contributes to overtime later.
Unless you're saying comp time doesn't.
Right, yeah. I just wanted to put that in my notes from the overtime discussion.
We've already put in there that sick time does not. So we've already said, you know, we've already.
Yeah, because, because then I'm not doing the quick math in my head at this hour. My, my brain is not functioning well at this hour. And calculating stuff to figure out if it was overtime that you turned into straight time hours to use for time off that then generated overtime later. Is it effectively all the same thing and it's just a shell game? Because you took overtime time to get straight time to make overtime again. I don't know that it would be any different, but.
No, I think, I think dollar, I think dollar wise, you end up with a wash.
Right?
You end up with a wash.
It's a little mental gymnastic, right?
Yeah. So instead of earning it in pay period one, you ended up utilizing it later, but you earned it in pay period two because it caused yourself to earn more overtime. And then for what purpose? It's the same cost to the town.
Unless, and then it bears the question even more if you brought in overtime to backfill that time off. Now, did you double up the overtime?
That's the only place where, that's the only place where I think comp time would have an impact financially is if you have to backfill with somebody else earning overtime. It's the only time you would see.
And it contributes to your overtime in the period. Because then you might be doubling up the overtime cost versus the original single overtime.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So that's, that's the, that's the finite line of, you know, where that would create a financial burden. I'm gonna tell you, my brain's mush.
Anything else on, I know. Anything else on comp right now? Comp time?
Nope.
There was a question or comment on comp time?
I just had a question. I don't expect you to answer tonight, but basically would, you had mentioned proposing a cap on how much comp time you could have, whether that would be a cap on how much you have in the bank or how much you could accrue total over the year.
In the bank. At any one given time. So if you had earned, say the cap was twenty-four, you earned your twenty-four, you utilized twelve, you can earn twelve more. And that can be a, that was the request is that it's a, an ever ebb and flow of a, a bank cap.
Just the question was, was that cap meant to be a, an annual maximum that you could earn at all? Or a cap on how much you could carry at any one time? And it's meant to be a carry cap?
A carry cap.
I can have up to this much at any given dime. I cannot accrue more, I cannot generate more than that until I've used some of it.
Correct.
And I think just for the baseline, we all agree that we do not want it carried past fiscal years regardless of what we decide on.
Correct. I'd like to keep it, I'd like to keep it clean where a fiscal year, because we budget fiscal year. So you don't want to.
You just want to close it out.
Even if it's, you know, fifty employees that are all carrying twenty hours, you know, that's, there's a thousand hours that is not in a line item for the next year. And now you're asking department heads to look at their overtime budget and say, well, I've got to account for that and I've got to inflate my overtime budget. It's, it's messy. And that rolls onto taxpayer dollars. It's different.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we all agreed on that one, at least that part of.
We agree on that.
I don't have to agree on a lot, but we all agree on that one.
We agree. Yeah, we're okay on that part.
Okay. With that, I would say let's.
Table it.
Let's table that there. We'll bring it back next week and continue.
We'll start up with deferred comp.
We'll start up with deferred comp.
All right.
And we have, anything else? We have executive session following, but anything else before we move into that tonight?
No. Not for me.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion when we go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of MGL, Chapter thirty A, the open meeting law, to review draft minutes of the select boards in November seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. We will not return to regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
It is a roll call vote. Call your name. Please signify aye or nay. William Bembry.
Aye.
Scott Bastarash.
Aye.
Jacob Smith.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.